Five, five, six, four.
You want your.
I've got.
Congratulations.
In the States of America.
To the father of Christian fans.
One of the issues.
On the bottom.
He would dissolve.
So I can have that we have a different center agenda. Second.
During the circus. What's going on has been very good side.
Aye, my.
The votes. With the parents. Yeah, I know. There was a report that the barman reports she's. Is that correct? Okay, it wasn't about it.
Yeah.
Okay, what color are they? Why I got whole stack of it?
Yeah. Um. Personally, we didn't have hearing. They are.
Public hearing. Also, the barman reports you have a thought. Was it a public hearing?
Yeah.
Public hearing in twenty twenty two budget workshop. Revenue profit tax for six oh two. It is six oh two. Any comments from the public?
Um. Mike Johnson.
No. Property tax.
Property tax.
Yeah.
Oh, property tax. We're.
Oh, probably tax first.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna take the whole one percent of it for a lot of things. Which, which even if that doesn't let us keep up with inflation. That it isn't fake, so. I think it's seven hundred and seventy three dollars more. For all the others combined.
Does that, um, the budget workshop? Require revenue and poverty taxes?
Yeah.
Considering?
Yep.
Okay, number two is water system plan update at six oh five. It's for about a minute and a half. Further than what shows. Can we still run with it? Or something planned out there. Mike?
Thank you, Dan. Uh, so, well, the last year we've been working on a lot of to find out that it's for the city and we've put together this nice vehicle for inviting it with a bunch of information. Uh, I'm gonna summarize that real quickly for you, um, and, and give you some information about what your water system consists of, what the needs are and how you might be, uh, addressing those needs over the next, uh, ten years. So these water system plans are documents required by Department of Health to be prepared at this point every ten years and helps guide, you know, decisions about your water system. So your drinking water system currently consists of, uh, source of two wells. Those wells, one, well, one, uh, uh, physical capacity of a little over two hundred gallons a minute, two hundred and twenty five gallons a minute. It's a. Uh, well, two has a physical capacity of about seventy five gallons a minute. Both of those wells are limited by a, a water rate that only ninety gallons a minute of withdrawal. So that's your, your biggest limiting factor for your water system is that water right. Um, the town's been working on this for a while and hopefully is very close to being able to get a, a new water right application, uh, approved by the Department of Health and we're hopeful that might happen here over the next year. Uh, that would increase your water rate, uh, to hopefully in the two hundred and thirty gallon range. So it would make a significant, um, improvement in your available water capacity. But, um, in addition as well, you've got two reservoirs, uh, obviously on the, the road coming into town. Uh, you've got, uh, thirty, about thirty six thousand feet of water in the ground. That's probably your biggest asset that you need to continue to be upgraded and maintaining. Um. As far as your existing system, you have about three hundred, uh, sorry, about, uh, three hundred and thirty nine current service connections in your system. And we are projecting that over the next twenty years, you're gonna add quite a few connections, both with some growth here in the existing downtown area and then also potential growth further up the hill. And what we projected in the ten year planning period is about three hundred and twenty two new, three hundred and twenty connections up the hill. Um. So that's gonna be quite a bit of additional demand on the system that, um, you have capacity for in your storage, but you need additional water rate capacity to be able to serve, um, down the road. Fortunately, you have the physical water capacity, you can get the water rate, um, resolved. Um. Your consumption in, in, in twenty twenty one was about eighteen million gallons over the entire year and the water produced to provide that water was about twenty five million gallons. And so there was about seven million gallons of water that went unaccounted for, whether that was leakage out of older pipes or we also suspect there may have been, uh, some, uh, metering inaccuracies that hopefully have been improved with replacement of water mains here over the last year. So there's some combination, the two that accounts for that seven million gallons of water was not consumed, but was produced. Um. So the basic, you know, deficiency that we've identified projecting forward for your water system are to get that water right issue resolved and we did two additional water rights, we have more source capacity. And then two, you've got some older water mains throughout the, the downtown area that, that really should be replaced so that you can keep up on that infrastructure and then also reduce some of your distributions of leak. Um. One of the, the main requirements of the water system planning process is that the Department of Health requires you to adopt new water use efficiency goals each time you do a new plan. And so within this plan, you have identified what your previous goals were and previously you had a goal to reduce your customer consumption by five percent over the twenty year planning period. Um, and you actually reduced that by a fair bit more um, over the last five years or ten years. Um, and then the supply side goal was reduced to the last encounter for what about one percent per year over seven years and unfortunately, that's not one thing we're able to meet, your, your distribution system, like it's end up staying relatively constant over that period of time. So that's, that's where replacing meters and perhaps doing some additional water name replacement could help. Uh, what we proposed within this plan for your new water use efficiency goals would be very similar in reducing your customer consumption by about five percent over the next ten years and then reducing your distribution system leakage and other unaccounted for water by one percent per year over the next ten years. We think those are goals that are reasonable and achievable, um, and, and would be, you know, achieved through hopefully replacing water distribution mains and then also encouraging conservation with your, with your customers. Um, so any questions or comments on, on why are you sufficiency? Before I move on to the next, because that's, that's the one the Department of Health requires you to ask.
Well, we did make our leakage expectation, so is there a new plan?
So the, the new plan is to, we've got a number of water distribution name replacement projects identified in the plan that should help with that, um, reducing your distribution system. So it, it will require, you know, some investments in the system in replacing pipe. And so that, that's probably the biggest thing that you can do to, to drop that number in addition to, uh, replacing some of your water meters because water meter, an older water meter frequently under reports. And so it may not, you may not be accurately tracking your consumption and that makes that distribution like system leakage look bigger than maybe it actually is.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to see us, you know, because we bill every two months. I'd like to see us have a statistic that we're watching every two months when we bill, which is how many gallons were brought from the well and how many gallons did we bill for? And I think if we start watching it, maybe we can, I mean, that'll.
Yeah, I mean, we need to be able to do an annual. Don't worry about it.
But, but we, I think we know every two months how much we pumped out of the well and we know how much we built for, so. I mean, I, I honestly, I'd like to see right now what are the new meters. I love, I love to see that number at our next council meeting. How much, you know, what's the new difference?
I'll just see it.
See what, yeah.
See if the new meters may change.
If I were the water guy, I would be standing on conscious and complaining as loud as I can. Now, I think it certainly causes that. Just a matter of trapping that day.
I have another question. I, I tried your plan where, um, different mains are gonna be worked on. For my personal and probably everybody in here that's listening, how does that work? Let's say on Pine Street. Is that gonna be one day of no water or several days?
So you won't have a day without water, but you might have a couple of hours without water when that water main is replaced. Typically, what happens when a water main is replaced is the, the contractor installed the new water main, um, parallel to the existing one. And then you keep the existing main in service until the new main is, uh, pressure tested and disinfected. And then you start transferring services from one main, from the old main to the new, old main to the new, old main to the new. And then when you get to the end, uh, then you take the old main out of service. So each individual customer would have maybe an, an hour or two where they, when they're transferring the service from one main to the other, you have a disruption service. Generally, when that happens, we require the contractor to provide forty hour, forty eight hours notice before they're gonna have that service interruption. And we're doing Second Street North next year. I think that's what your plan. Yes, I mean, and, and, you know, we have the plan here, um, and then it, it's incumbent upon the, the city to then, you know, follow through with that. And sometimes, you know, these are capital projects that have a, a cost that sometimes gives them in your budget, so those may require that you go out and get some external financing to help fund those projects. And again, this is a plan. It's not a you know, firm commitment that you have to do this year or next year. If you end up with a say a road project where you get some, you know, grant funding to do a road project, you can adjust when you're doing the water main to make sure that, say, say it was the Fifth Street Water Main instead of the Second Street because you had a, an opportunity with a road project to get that Fifth Street one done ahead of time. So you, you can adjust these, but this provides a pretty good roadmap for what we think is the reasonable pace to get these things replaced. Um, the other strategy they may use is that we've got these spaced out to every year or two. There's a water main project, you could also con- consider, you know, doing two or three water main projects as one project in one year in order to be more efficient going and getting some financing through, say, drinking water state revolving fund or another of the programs. So I appreciate that you said you were gonna help us with that. Yeah, we will absolutely help with that, so. Um, and that, that is a real nice transition, the capital improvement plan where, you know, we did include a project to continue getting the water right, uh, expanded. Uh, there are a couple of developer funded projects that we've identified in the plan, one to construct a new booster station to support development up on the hill and another to to construct a new reservoir to support future development on the hill. And then also a, a, a water main that would go up the hill to, to support that. And then we have a bunch of distribution system projects, you know, Second Street being the first one, um, identified throughout the downtown area that we think are important to be able to keep up with, uh, your aging infrastructure. Now, the, the big, you know, important thing to think about here is that you have to continue to, you know, keep up with your revenue in order to be able to do these projects and you know, right now, say between two thousand and seventeen and twenty twenty one, your annual water expenses have increased by about six percent per year. And so we've assumed that that's probably gonna continue over time and we've recommended it within the plan that you consider rate increases of about six percent a year to be able to keep up with those increasing costs. Now, if you do end up with, you know, growth and development occurring up the hill, you're gonna get some connection charge revenue and you're gonna have more customers to spread some of these operating costs over. And so you may be able to make some adjustment over time. Each year when you do budget, you should be thinking about, okay, what do we have coming up next year? What's, what's our revenue and expenditure has been last year and make an adjustment. And it might be, hey, we don't need to do six percent this year, we could maybe do four percent this year. You know, the, the revenues come in a little bit higher than expected. Or it may be, hey, we've got a couple of projects that you decided to push forward this year, so our rate increase maybe should be eight percent this year. But the, the six percent per year gives you a target based upon historical uh, revenues and expenditures and, and what we see what you need to do as part of your capital improvement plan. So that's the, that's the basic summary. Um, any questions, uh, that I can answer on? Monster document, best document?
Yeah. Pretty fantastic. Easy to read. Fun, I liked the, um, I mean, fun, I actually love some, um, my friends, but I don't just, um. Um. The, the backgrounds of to lead up.
The history of the system, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was really well done, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Adam and Sheri helping me.
Yeah.
And you also, uh, are, yeah, are the having us look at increasing our service area, which not necessarily is our U D A, but potentially outwards our U D A. Yes, no, and, and, and we have, that's a pleasure, brought that up. We have drawn a little bit larger boundary, uh, incorporating properties along command and, and then, you know, the, the area to the, um, north and west of, of Calhoun Meadows also that is a potential annexation area. And all of you watching or either here, when you get home, when you wanna look, this, the entire document is available online. That would be on page thirty, where you can see that great picture.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any you wanna close the public hearing? Go to the process.
Yeah.
The other, the other college will close the public hearing. And we'll back to the department reports.
Yeah, gray. Blue and green. We're still, still.
Okay, I've got the public works. Staff and board sheet. Mike says member of camera homes in regards to units of pine street, both homes are now hooked into the water and sewer system. We're gonna silver site, silver street site will be starting soon. They get the true proof of the windlock and did a quick inspection. Hopefully this will be able to come from our current room to this new one. We'll start this process as soon as we finish digesting the beginning empty now. Pick up a mixture more from Reed Leffy in Portland. We will be putting it together and we will be changing it as possible. The A L S heating will be clean, check out our system as a W W two, uh, first holding they have. Worked on the overflow slash tent parking area in the park. Before the travel is done, just to finish course, walls from the water. Whenever plans for the upper zone, which construction, Mike and Grant Alver will be down on Monday at seven to go for them, your public house, right? And with Jill on the second to go with the public works budget. Turn my stuff in. Does it work for Mike? Sure, any questions for Mike on this report? Mike, do you have anything else to add to it?
Uh, no, um, better to come down and settle back and get, uh, and requirement for what it, the system.
Remember? The reverse.
Oh, well, it's not about stuff on the street for I just wondering if we were ever, ever able to get locks on the bathrooms.
Oh, I was working on it.
Um, and I have a question about, um, how, uh, were we open with the power outage? That all detail.
Yeah, the generators are working real well for emergency power comes on, as it should. Um, probably, uh, this year will come near, uh, will have been serviced again.
Okay. So when you say working on it, do we need the counseling, have them come put on or what are we gonna do? Cause we've had them since this summer.
Right, um, well, I mean, uh, we'll try to get them as soon as we can. Uh, maybe, uh, this week or next.
Any other questions?
Not sure if you've caught, um, what I said, it was, if, if you could bring the, the stats on how many gallons for pumping and then you can work with the front office about how many gallons is sold. You can maybe get an idea what the trailing too much loss will apply.
Sure.
I mean. If I was in point twenty percent. Definitely the all of them. Yeah.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Okay, I've got the police report, willing to summary of police department current events, I have to be summary evaluation of interior police department evidence room, surplus.
We have, and she maybe can give us reports so we can kind of engage with each other. And she wanted to go things pretty long.
Well, I don't. We used to, we used to not read you well, but then everybody know we were talking about the audience, so then I started reading the audience, so. Now you wanna go back to the whole one?
No, I think that's actually a loss that the person giving you the report, screen report.
All right. Dwayne, you want to, before?
What's that?
Would you like to step up the, we can start the light over. Bring the bar.
Well, I mean.
I was, I was.
Right, in some ways, there, there's a lot of information in there. I just kinda wanted to give the community an overall evaluation of the, the police department, what I, what I have observed, where it stands, what we need to do as far as to, to bring it up to a little bit higher standards professionalism. Um, for me, the main thing has always been liability. Liability is number one. Um, for, for, for the mayor and for the council of the department. The second is a community oriented policing. And I think we've accomplished a good start in that, we've talked all the business owners, uh, personally. Uh, we've been patrolling the community, we attended the veterans', uh, breakfast over there, which is a good thing. And then, uh, Chris Russ, the superintendent of school, talked about active shooter. Um, as far as the law enforcement side of it, has, has anybody gone into the school and looked at it? You know, so we're prepared and he's agreed to let us actually come in there and walk around on the weekend. We're not gonna have a big drill, but it's, it's a, it's a conditioning thing you learn from the military, like just walk into the school and say that somebody's in a lunchroom with a, with a gun. What are we gonna do as law enforcement? What, what, what do we have for cover and concealment? And we're gonna do that in all the schools, um, so we've done that. Um, we also have a, uh, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend, I just found this out from uh, Jim, I'm gonna attend the lines meeting on Wednesday at six thirty, I'll be there for that. And then, uh, I still have to go to head start and talk with the kids over there. So we are doing a lot of things very quickly, uh, very excited about it. A lot of good feedback, uh, willing, open to listening to anything that came, we might have to add in. Uh, we're working with, uh, Cindy to prepare some community, um, surveys we're gonna send out to homeowners and business owners. And there's no pressure on that at all, just tell us how you feel and then we can see that information and understand how we can better serve. Uh, from the law enforcement side, I pulled over probably about fifteen people in in the community, all verbal warnings, you know, get your belly as great stops feeding, you know? And it's been, it's been proactive and it's been really good, a lot of good feedback on that one. So we know the law enforcement's back in town, but nobody's getting the ticket yet. Which is, I mean, pretty important. I didn't like getting tickets when I was, I was a kid, so I'm not a big ticket giver. But, um, sometimes you do have to give, I try not to give them, people can correct their behavior, that's the best way to go. Um, two major cases, I was gonna talk to the mayor about that, the council, that it's brought, been brought to my attention, I can't slow the lap, there's two cases that, that, that I'm gonna have to sit down and read the file on. So, um, if you don't see me out running around on patrol like I have been, this is because I'm reading the case file, I need to understand what's going on. Obviously, I can't disclose any more than that, but to say that we, we do need to look at those cases and have it resolved. So that's pretty much it. Um, I went to the churches on Sunday, the first Sunday I was here, that was uh, an amazing opportunity to go in congregation pastors, I thought that was awesome. And just actually go in there and see everybody. So that's what we're doing. You have any questions, I'm willing to answer. Um, I said I was high energy, so I'm. That's, that's what I do, thank you. Any questions?
Really great that you're gonna stay that shooter in school.
Yes. Oh, one last thing is I wanna incorporate, uh, M M I W into the um, the law enforcement program. Murdered and missing indigenous women and children and men is a very, very, um, horrible thing when you actually look at it. Me as a Native American, the father of seven daughters, uh, I had no idea that so many women and children when they got involved in twenty twenty in that movement. And so again, I'll be talking to the council and, and the mayor on the side, I, I would like to see this police department kind of be the, um, we don't wanna call it the example of how to incorporate that into a law enforcement program and be proactive about it. When I say proactive, there's things that we can do as a team, we can have a lock and run, raise funds. You know, we can put up signs, you know, those types of things. Um, and then obviously the police department can do its, uh, fair share.
Maybe would have they just established that they're both things on them?
Yes, uh. Um, well, very quickly, uh, so the last two years when we did the bike and run across America, um, on the sovereign Navy reservations, um, I did that all the time as a grassroots movement. And I was invited to testify at the legislative in Washington State of Columbia, the Capitol. We were able to talk to, um, Democrats and Republicans and they came together, which I thought was really cool. They came together and got the job done, funding has been created. They've established that, the missing and murder indigenous women alert line, which I think is really awesome to get going. So yeah, that's, that's good. Yeah, there is a purple debt, uh, basement, some hotlines and some things that are going on specifically right now. Go Seahawks? We're one, and Huskies. So you know, I have to take him out.
Any other questions for Dwayne?
Oh, I want to have some super interesting life, because it's interesting, I would just say, there's actually a really good TV show on, I think A P T now.
Yep.
Uh, and it's called Alaska Navy or, yeah, and it's about, that's what it's mostly about is, um, trying to solve cases, uh, missing women.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty good, if you're interested. I want to need information and things that you can see that, that you change, so.
Does anybody like yellow suit? Yeah. Okay, so I'm just gonna let the cat out of the box, I, I, um, was an extra in season five. I don't know, I don't know if I'll be on there, that's all I'm gonna say, I just know that I have to go there for two days. Oh, my wife said you should just do it, so I wasn't working. So I, it's a really dumb part, I don't know, too good, yeah, I just stand as like, this is the, we call it, no, it's a good thing, I just stand on it. And then Jamie does, talking in the hallway with the.
Make yourself.
Yeah. I have many seconds. I don't believe me.
Down the shore report, every telephone call. Okay, from the clerk's office. Don't even talk about it, I'm gonna read it. Would you like it back? Project summary. Amen. You don't know, you're still me, Stephen.
I've heard that.
I knew I was in trouble. Anyway.
I have my middle name.
Yeah, there you go, that that was really a, well, I'm gonna switch right now. Okay, we have building permit services through Willlock. Nothing new to report. Water, sewer lines, toilet, bater, nothing new to report. Planning, Calis Meadows, Tom Mike Duncan, we're working on Stevens determination. Accesions, meeting with Tom Superintendent Rose and Eric on twenty sixth about impact fees. On school being annexed and with the current applicant. Next step applicant has to submit sixty percent petition. Department summary, it occurred, we had a police department. We have the police department and council chambers painted. And I can smell it, so I walked by the door.
It's better than what it was.
Well, general, it was really strong, so hopefully it's strong as well. Anyways, in opposite cause we did the prep work, removing everything from the walls, moving mostly off, scrubbing it out and it's back in. We are getting close to having carpet redone and the police department and council chambers helping achieve good effort, knowing. The patrol car is scheduled to be fixed on October twenty first. Still has had difficulty getting a response from them because it's scheduled.
November, that's October.
Mm-hmm, okay, you got it covered, November.
It's November, we know already.
Yes, well.
I got some notes from my check and call with Todd Johnson. Treasure report, Julie, wanna read that?
There's not a whole lot on it.
I, yeah, I think I see that. Treasure report, I've been working on the budget, that's the treasure report. Anyway, back to the clerk, is any questions for the clerk, for the council? Okay, is there any questions for the treasurer? Nothing? If you're a building clerk slash clerk's assistant, doing billing issues that was not able to learn in our process. The harmony software and their customer service have been very hard to work with. I've been contacting them multiple times and not getting responses back.
It's going on now. Exes? Yeah, I don't know.
Dwayne, you wanna road trip? Road trip. Uh, I don't, still just be friends, that's all I wanna do right now at this point. Doing it, those problems solved. That's all the reports I have. For right now. So let's jump into the council report, Emily first.
Um, get your flu shot.
Are you here, Will?
No, but I had a flu last week, so get your flu shot.
Eric? Okay, so, let's see, I went to the school board meeting, um, there's a lot of talking about. About the building out of that traffic facility, the facility there. Got Dr. Chris Russ, I think that's somebody else already put down. I went to the chamber of Congress meeting in Willlock. They had geez, Spence in there, long and. I was like, mayor, something, a long and engaged conversation again. Uh, that's kind of a wonderful forty five inch glass, I was at this car that was fun, and it's amazing classes everywhere. Let's see. Emily and I, uh, park roast cleaned out the purpose shed, so she was nice enough to take that to the dump. I was surprised, I didn't think there was gonna be much, still the entire truck. Yeah, uh, been working on the budget. Uh, recharge, so Leo's out there, supposed to be here today to give us a hard on it so we can have better uh, service, but they weren't here, so. I'm not gonna go talk to any person. And while I'm here, Congress committee is in Australia, another thing is to be high on that, so we're gonna be working on uh, these for the committee.
Dylan?
I think a lot, uh, Eric and I went to a council meeting in Willlock. And thank them for their support with the police, you know, supporting us while we were working on. In our chief back in, um, a car and all of those things, and we'll be with you and. Yeah, um, on all of us.
Okay, Kelly?
First time looking at the budget at this time. And what Jill makes it easy to put at workshops in small chunks, but that's quite something to back ahead of involving. Different items and like, I do, it's the questions for the versions today. I want. It's probably desirable and. Take about three sit downs in a couple hours. Yeah, to get, but it's fun. Bring it work. Ben?
I don't know.
Okay, next we got the committee reports. And police committee reports. None? Park work? Nothing? Planning commission? Go ahead.
Oh, no. Yeah, I never said we were finding committee for annexation, there's going to be meaning, I wouldn't say. We're also going through the structure that we. Running through the path after the workshop that was some. Put in. Um, I did it as long as Mike was hearing, I wanted to mention that we. Have been approached as a mayor and with some folks that don't land in or already reserved, but maybe four or five years. Part of the. Meeting that we had dealt with the fact that they are in possession of a couple of agricultural wells. That have a very large output and uh. You know, not putting a cart before the horse, would in a. Unsteepably, um, in some time in the world, it's gonna be turned over to the city. For so years in one of the. Requirements of doing that is that they have a five year. Record of blows. Through their uh, through their wells, so the water lines can be. Uh, calculated. So we'd be able to take those invisible well. From the process right now, you know, the city council has approved a ten percent of an application for the annexation. And so you're kind of applying on sent to the, it's like, and the, you know, consulting, we'll be there. Dealt with uh, either the annexation process. That would increase revenue to the city for us. We have Calis Meadows and Centavision. Uh, while the clock is ticking, it's currently pretty much on hold. Um, they have agreed to. Uh, abide by the impact pre-structure that the consultant put together for the annexation group. Uh, for their subdivision as well. Um, I think there's more to be done on that one. Where we are.
Speaking on that guy, was possibly your possible to our one, has he done a five year study? On the. Production of the water wells?
We're reaching out to him right now, trying to get a response to him, that's uh, I believe it's uh, probably in the ashlock. And they have two hundred acres out there along Southern, and even to the state to find to eventually. Annex into the city, so, um. We're, wanna make sure that they're aware of the type of they need to cover. So.
Okay, thank you.
Has, has anybody reached out to the school, you have to see if they're listed in. And you know?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Uh, Chris must just gonna take that to his um, to his board. Maybe, maybe you have an out at the sixty percent if they decide they don't want to, but there's really no downside for them. Doesn't happen now, it'll happen this year without course, but early misery.
For our sewer and streets? Any reports, Mike, nothing? Plan group, committee?
Meeting.
Meeting? Okay. If you're done, probably agree, you're gonna have some special presentation then. Public comments on agenda, I was finding the prior story, it would be, any sign up for the? Discussion right now?
Not agenda items, put it in.
Just like the end?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can move on to do business?
Yep.
Order seven seven nine, add worrying taxes. Property taxes first reading.
Like tan, brown.
Order seven seven nine. An ordinance submitting ordinance number seven sixty of the city of Toledo establishing the add worrying tax loading upon real and personal property within the city of Toledo. For the year twenty twenty three. I entertain a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion that we, if we're reporting seven seventy nine.
I'll start with that.
Here's the move in second. Any other discussion on it? So vote, all of them, bear say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is Lewis County Animal Shelter Agreement Renewal. Well, I've got here online letters. From formula that Lewis County Animal Shelter has hereby given the city of Toledo ninety eight notice of termination. Of our inter local agreement, why animal shelter service that became effective on the first nineteen ninety eight. Although Lewis County is currently in a possible major change regarding the animal shelter. It may be amenable to negotiate a new inter local agreement. If the city of Toledo wishes to negotiate an update and revise inter local agreement, please contact um. Bob and I at real six for all of our book. So.
Then with that.
And then underneath, there's no changes, just updating the agreement. Right?
Yeah.
Inter local animal shelter agreement between both county and city two.
I see, when they say they highlighted the cost of. Of the uh. Receipt of a, an board of a strike, is that, are they trying to point that out?
That's what our fee, our fee is, and we allow someone to take an app, a dog up there.
For instance, our two. If he takes a dog he finds rolling on the streets.
So we're really going.
No, they do, this is just a technicality, there's a, they're redoing all, they're redoing all of their agreements because they are. They have some technicalities up there, so they're redoing all of their paperwork.
They should really worry on something.
I think they're just, they're just updating the terms and, yeah. And it's, they're not changing, changing the agreement, they're just, I think they're also gonna be doing a new knowing.
Yeah.
But, so they got a lot going on, they're moving their shelter from where it's at. So they just wanna, they just wanna make sure that, um, sorry, they're moving to, um, gosh, where the old, um. To make, Washington's taking place, Fred Union once, right there.
No longer want a nineteen ninety eight agreement.
Yeah, we want eighty thousand twenty two agreement.
Definitely not to.
Well. They altered that issue, they have almost all their stuff. So, this is just a.
They probably came there with dogs, I don't know. Probably on a.
So, this is just to streamline it for everybody, they. Right, so.
Okay, so there'll be a new, so will be no, a new inter local agreement once they. Settle down.
Well, what I understand is they're giving you. A new inter local agreement with no changes, just updating the agreement. They, they just want to update it, and so they're saying if you're still interested. Or want to negotiate that, let them know. So Mike, if you don't like something in the agreement, we can negotiate it, but I mean, we've been looking with it, I don't know for this long, so.
It's a while.
Maybe ask the contact number, John Alfred.
Okay, let's uh. I hand a motion to accept this?
I, so, I second that.
Then move in second, any other discussion on it? Let's vote on it, all the favors say aye.
I think.
Oppose? Motion carries.
No question, so does that mean then that you will be contacting them to let them know, or just gonna accept the agreement or?
Okay, the third one on new business of both kind sheriff's office, point one three, jail settlement agreement amendment.
So they're increasing the price from my, from seventy seven twenty five a day to eighty one eleven a day.
Can you give a summary of that, Eric?
It looks like just the price for a man, if if we have somebody that's in their general.
Hasn't increased?
Had an increase by.
So they have amended it?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's ready? I understand a motion?
I think the motion that we accepted and then the two of the Lewis County Sheriff's Office jail, inter local agreement. Vice second.
Remove the second, any more questions? Okay, let's vote on it, all the favors say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, I'm finished with the fourth, seven seven seven.
Button number?
I think I called that one.
An ordinance in the city of Toledo, Washington, admitting the state of Toledo land development code section ten and eleven. And believable municipal code title eight, chapter one and two, and title ten. I'll entertain a motion on that, this was second reading.
I'm making a motion to know we accept permits, Senator.
I will second that motion.
It's removed and seconded, any other discussion? Then let's vote on it, all the favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to ordinance number seven seventy eight, then there'll be. Okay, moving on to ordinance number seven seventy eight, then there'll be C and TMC quote road standard, second reading. It says. On the ordinance, an ordinance in the city of Toledo, Washington granting a franchise to Sprint Communications Company LP. A Delaware Limited Partnership to operate telecommunications in the public rights, in the public right of way. To provide telecommunications services in Toledo. And repeal ordinance number five five one. Entertained motion for that.
I will, we accept version seven seven eight.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Well, that's well, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to other business. Ash Street. Phillips, multiple, multiple water connection metering.
You know, maybe I can.
Those, those waters. And you know, you drive around the pictures there. Everybody read it?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Well, at some point now. Oh. Oh. Hmm. Sure.
In the. Other business, Ash Street. They don't have that.
It wasn't in the past.
Never saw it, but.
There's a lot of people.
You know. Well, well, she's not, I thought she didn't be here, but she. It's up on Ash Street, they have a single. White trailer and maybe are. Have the, on one parcel, they built a new residence on another parcel. When according to the building permit, they're supposed to remove the single white trailer once they are leaving in the residence. Maybe. So that they're living in it now, so. The deal was that they would have to disconnect. From the trailer and that connection will go to the new residence. In lieu of a nine thousand dollar hookup fee. Well, now she's saying that she wants to possibly keep that connection. And use it as, I think it was for.
A caregiver.
A caregiver for her husband, who's health is failing. And so we told her, well, then you have, will have to pay for that connection fee and then you'll have the additional. Five monthly bill to it. And she, of course, didn't like that idea. And said, we gave her till November fourth to make her decision and she wanted to come to council, talk to council about it to see what. You guys would give her a deal or something like that. And so we said we would give you till. Council meeting will come and she. Come to it. Before we said she has disconnected her pay, the hookup fee. Still did I miss anything?
The only thing that we do offer is if she were to keep it connected and pay her bi monthly bill. We can offer a. Water and sewer loan. She would have to pay what the current interest rate is. We did it with, um, a house on Augusta Street. Um, and she would have to make a monthly payment to us for the nine thousand dollar loan. Again, I mean. Giving her, she's claiming hardship, but we all have. Harship, so, I mean. The deal was for her to connect with that new house, she had to disconnect the other one or pay the nine thousand.
And that wasn't good dealing with that one.
What's that?
That wasn't good deal.
Yeah, at that time, because she'd have to pay, yeah.
So, you have this discussion, we need to make a motion, my, my grand. I have a motion that we deny the request to, um, keep the extra meter. And not pay the nine thousand. Now.
Okay.
I will motion that we deny a request. To, um, not renew the second meter and. Pay the nine thousand dollars. Or give her some kind of deal. And he seconded. So she could pay the nine thousand dollars. And keep the second meter and pay the fee for that home even anyways. So. However, it would be paid as normal residents, right? Like you wouldn't tell anybody else to pay as water bill.
Does this? Does this, does this kind of connect to the range of those?
Kind of.
But this is an additional eight years, essentially added to the property.
Yeah.
So. So, you know, in the year come out, it becomes a, and, you know, and we, we're out, we're out. You know, the, the money it takes to maintain our water and sewer.
Yeah.
Which. As apparently is getting six percent more expensive here.
I just saw the two remaining.
Kind of, but they are.
They're, 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 where it's not.
Yeah, yes, well, that would be.
Kind of the same. Okay, motion for the motion and seconded, is we need more discussion on this? Denial or do you want? Vote on it. And vote on it. Ready to vote? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Other denial.
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Sure. Now we got a note, one twenty one, all the states.
Is that one in there?
Well, no. Well, so are we on the wallpaper?
No. No, no, different one. So that one is. I guess, kind of, we all hold alert. So in. August, at one of the council meetings, the friend who came to the council and you. For one twenty one alder and said that she has been renting the basement of their. House. The last few years, so since it was brought to our attention, we sent them a letter that because you have someone living there. The, the multiple dwelling, like businesses.
Yes.
You have to have the other hookup or we have to charge you the additional. Water sewer bill, which of course they did not like. And they said they were about to show up today to. Ask council about it, which obviously they did not show up, so. But they don't agree with being charged the second water sewer bill for having the rent there because she's a senior citizen and. They're trying to hook her out and yada yada.
So what's your game to go back to the ordinance?
Not only though do they live in their house and they have to be renting their basement, they're also running the business on that same property. So that they don't have two, they have three.
They have two, they.
Yeah, there's.
Okay, yeah. I, I, I have to, because they have two, they have three things going on.
Yes.
So they pay for two, yeah, they pay for two. But they have three.
Yes.
My dual was on a. Okay, right, yeah. And what they think one, it's.
And what does the ordinance say about that? When you have, no, that was, that was something different.
You know, the multiple dwellings either have a separate connection and if the separate connection is, I think, not feasible, then we'll charge them. For. An additional bill basically. For their usage and her usage has gone up and she claims that it hasn't.
When they get charged a second bill, then their usage will increase to sixteen thousand allowed gallons from the eight. So that just doubles everything. That they, you know, bill will double, but their usage, their allowed usage will double as well.
And do you have any idea what they're consuming?
I don't, I have.
They're at. Two over the well. Twelve thousand gallons.
So they would, they would reduce their overage charges.
Yeah.
But they would have a second bill.
Two thousand. June was nine. April was nine. January was twelve.
Yes, we did, yeah. Okay, so I make the motion that we deny the request, sorry, that we need to have a motion to. You really need one. So I make the motion that we deny their request to, I don't know what their request is. To not pay the extra fee, that's why I'm understanding, because I don't have any. Thing here, so I'm, I make a motion to be denied a request not to pay the extra.
Additional.
Additional, yeah. They give you additional bi monthly bill.
I'll second that.
This one moved on second, any other discussion?
Uh, this might be a good time to bring up something, I think we're very working on next year, which could make things like this simpler. Which is to change the way we build. Uh, so such that we have a base fee and then we charge for water. Right now we have a very high, high fee. And then we basically give water, like, three dollars, three thousand. So hopefully. I know there's nothing out, but hopefully. Over time, we can find a way. To, to not consume a whole lot of water in solo buildings. Okay, if the. The whole summer. And it also encourages conservation because, you know, because it should be expensive to use the water. Somewhere, I have no idea how that ends up working. Maybe Grayon can help me. On this spreadsheet because.
Any other discussions? Okay, you heard a motion or a seconded, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. From again, but. Don't forget on sign up.
We can.
Yeah.
Not first.
Hey.
So I'm up to my.
He's walking more, he's prepared. He's got a line queue. First of all, I want to thank Eric for coming up. Clearly. Motion. Future. Also, I'd like to thank the chief for coming up and scanning a couple of bits of paths through the, through the park. Uh, a couple of things that we've noted, uh, we're getting some visitors at night and they're kind of, I don't know what the attraction is. But we're getting probably two, with some cars on average every other day. And they must like to cruise the park. And I'm not quite sure why they're cruising the park and at a lot at night. Uh, but these kind of cruises the park and then they're kind of driving at a kind of. Little higher, but just speed then around for hours. Um, and so I kind of put that out there so the board can hear it. Uh, something that we may want to look at into. Uh, we've also gotten two hosts multiple times, they'll be posting our resume. The ladies. Smoking a bottle or something. Uh, other than that, we've done basic maintenance, I've gotten a number of good feedback. After the citizens have come out and walked their dogs or the cross country teams have come out and run. Uh, they've been pretty well with that. The first thing we do, uh, is take off the leaves or blow the leaves now. That's lines from the last couple of stories we've had. Um, and. Traffic signs again, just spot on, I'll be letting signs should be posted, maybe that's for future. Uh, reference in the budget. Uh, to go through, to go through that. Um, other than that, we're locking the doors. I don't have any cameras, they get locked at dusk. If not before, we have less vandalism than happens. Uh, so that's all, that's been, that was, that's been, yeah, a lot. So hopefully, any questions?
Ken, you want to do the same thing on the gates? The show about?
Well, you know, that was one of the things that we talked about, that would probably be a discussion for the board even aside, because we know at one time. Uh, there was been discussion about keeping this park open year round.
Yep.
However, I'm not had an opportunity to talk to Charlie when the, when the other agents had go up. Uh, we have not noted anybody, honestly, recently, perhaps, understanding with us. Uh, and again. Again, we have these cruisers that kind of come through the park and it's on the average shift. Through the night until after eight o'clock, when it's dark, I'm not quite sure what they're looking for, they'll stop. And kind of cruise a little bit and then they take that off again.
How about we send the chief of the light?
Oh, no, the chief been on a couple of different times, you know.
But I mean, no, during that time, it was kind of something that someone who I saw.
I'm sure they're here to have that know the timeframe and split.
Yeah, it's obvious, but I mean.
Yeah.
It's just something that we.
I don't know if you're, you're on YouTube, you know.
It's just something that we're kind of, you know.
I'll take your, your kill over here.
Have you? Yeah, but you know, it's, it's really complex and it's like, it's not that. People, so it's like, hey, why?
It is.
Why are you really out here? And I'm really, we're kind of cons, I don't want, it'd be a safe issue. All right, other matters lastly is, uh, again, uh, we've been brought, we had some damage done prior to the fall, uh, hitting. Our town, the full memorial for the young man. Uh, his picture's been shattered out of that and currently working with my stuff trying to get that in place. Uh, we brought that up to, to post. And then, uh, some. Time to work into the budget for the future, I'm sure. A top of my, my, he probably thinks it might be a little bit. Look like.
Really? Hi.
So. Sorry, that's, you wanted to start that, so.
Okay, any other?
One more.
Four.
You got three minutes.
Yeah, Robert Hurry, I'm, uh. I live just out of the city limits. On the other side of water shed, I'm just a boss. Roberts Lane, running the city limits, the watershed, the punk house is right in front of where I live. It's tribal property, so. Uh, I care take that property, which is the field behind the ball. Thought of all fields. And it's immediately behind the old, uh. Karaoke Dave's, uh, uh, where the military trucks are in that, I always forget his last name.
They weren't there, Rich, Dave Martin.
You know, the military trucks, the next, next place down Roberts Lane is the, the tribe got that, has that in conservancy. Given to him from the state off by the feds because of that protected plant back there. Anyways, so I, I care take that and I maintain that road, which the city of Toledo. Is just a liberal land crosses in front, not part of the watershed, except for part of the front and, uh. I've been after the tribe to gravel it, put some gravel on it, uh, stuck to the mirror before and it's okay because we've always maintained it. And I got rid of all the circles, deleted it, but I, I. Last time it was gravelled with my thumbs. When the bridge was being replaced on the creek down here and everybody on the bridge crest had to go out that way through that water gate. So, so it's a, it's a good thing to, what I, what I need, what I'm asking council and, uh, the committee is, uh. If I, in order, this man. He said he knew the MOU and the tribal gravel that road. But he needs a memorandum of understanding that. It's okay with you guys. To do that. And I would just go in my pocket, I'm, that's all, that I am with the slow motion and this has been a couple of years. We were just elected here when I first spoke to you about that, and I'm not watching right here. Anyways, uh. Uh, matter of fact, because I think I talked with Jerry about. You know, because. I think that was a long time, I've been trying for years. Anyway, so. If someone would contact me, there's more to this for the city by having that memorandum, he puts that. Access to that tribal property onto the, what they call reservation road list. That's a, a federal transportation. Pool of money to try and, in fact, he, he mentioned this Saturday at our council meeting that that. That puts it into like some fifteen mile radius around that property, he comes, I would give all of this. You know, limited, I don't know how that works, so don't, we're on TV, so. Anyway, someone should really contact me, he, this for next year's, uh. Uh, list that he said there, there, there are not good hearing of this. List for years, um, within the tribe, but, uh, it's on the list. Could be a, a boom, um, you know, could, in, in general, the sites just to grow and gravel.
I know the winter months are here upon us right now.
And it'll hurt it because I'm down to, uh. The base on there, I keep it straight.
Wait, that's all I'm gonna say, can you do some rock now?
Uh, yes, always, because I'm down to fifth run, I can't grade, grade it anymore because I'll bring up.
Next question. Next question, all rock guy, you'd be five eights or be inch and a quarter?
Five eights, we, we top it off, I think.
Five eights was a topper. But it's a, it's a lot of clients, but.
Oh, yeah, inch and a quarter probably, if you work, because I've reestablished the crown, but that's what I wanted to do with. The homeowners. That use that way out for months, for that month when they replaced the bridge. They put five eights down, but I had inch and a quarter coming, but they got the five eights down before that.
Okay.
It's dusty, terrible dusty.
Still. Would the Robert's Lane qualify for the city of street? Mine?
We have a agreement that we don't maintain it.
You don't maintain it?
No.
It's M O U and we will.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's in pretty good shape right.
But still have dealt situation right now. The winter months are gonna work.
Yeah, but he'll, he'll, if, if he had an M O U, they, they.
What is involved in getting this?
Rock.
No.
Oh, he's working on some for city of center, city of Ridgefield, more down by our reputation.
I'd be happy to take that.
Somebody which is contacted. It's just that.
If you give that to me, I will, I will.
If you're contacted, means they'll fill it in and, and if all the other benefits, et cetera, you know, I mean it.
Well, something there that we need to get on the floor, grab those stuff and ready make some money. It's gonna be terrible deal.
My guy drove it, my guy drove it last week because we would like to put, we're talking about putting access to our, to our home from there.
Better access than down.
That, that one of these little things.
I think that being on the list of that, you know, in that radius here, so that might, except, who knows? I, I have no idea. He didn't know, didn't he, how much? More than just the.
That, that's, is your memory. I understand what you just said. Yeah. That's it.
Yeah. I couldn't.
You did it, Eric. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and here's, here's, uh. My, I'll get you some numbers. Okay.
Okay.
Business cards and handwritten on there. We're all changing hats and, and expanding. He's not just public works anymore. He's also our transportation director. We're all wearing two or three hats. As we.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah, because he said within a week he'll have all of it. Done. So, okay, it's certainly putting in all, all the other ways that M O U could help you out.
Forgot you.
Then you're.
Some things take time to.
Yeah.
You, you fix that.
It has the resident. I went on, I'm sorry, I'm not, it's a resident, but I'm all work and controlling. In, uh, in high school and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there any other public input? That's it? No, I'm gonna get a motion. It's been moved in the second. All of them bearers say aye.
Aye.
The vote? Now we got a workshop tonight.